This meeting of the Starfield Board of Alderman will now come to order. And we have a short agenda tonight. The first order of business is a report from the Budget Committee.
You'll find in your packet, um, the last of the budget amendments for the, for the year. And looking at that, you'll be able to see that the very last line on the first page is the amount that's coming out of the end of the fund balance. So we're kind of pretty close to not dipping into the end of the fund balance any further than the year. The rest is, um, line item transfer between, between various, um, items there. Debbie will get that input and then that will allow the city to proceed with their end of the year financial audit and will put 2010 away for the year. Um, the other, there were two other things that we talked about during that meeting. One, Ms. Outlaw updated us on the status of the software for the City Clerk's office, which is, that process is moving along and she's anticipating going forward with that pretty soon. Um, the third thing we talked about, um, actually is a follow-up to some earlier conversations with Mr. Boyd from, um, Ms. Rule about the cash flow impact of giving an additional holiday for city employees since we weren't able to do a raise this year if there were some possibility of providing an additional day off in the form of a holiday. Um, Mr. Boyd and Ms. Rule and Ms. Outlaw agreed that there should be no real cash flow impact to the city for giving that. And as a result, we were trying to find a way to find a day that falls in, because our holiday schedule is a calendar year schedule and our fiscal year runs through September 30th, we were trying to find a day before the end of this calendar year that could be a day, an additional day off and then a day in the next calendar year but that is still in fiscal year 11. So, so we have, um, we have a proposal but that's the next item of business to, um, to, to grant two additional holidays, not setting a precedent for future years. It's a one, one time issue because the calendars, as y'all know, the calendar for holidays is set annually, so it is a one-time benefit to the employees.
And if you'd like, you can go ahead and transition.
Can I roll into the next one?
Yeah.
Um, there was some discussion at that meeting and the days that were proposed were an extra day during the Christmas holiday, um, and, and the, that would be in calendar year 2010 and then in 2011, um, to add a day around the 4th of July, so that became a four-day weekend instead of a three-day weekend. And as a result, I would move approving the, amending the holiday schedule for the calendar year.
Oh wait, we're not there yet.
Okay.
We've got, the, the order of the agenda is the, the finals of budget amendment for fiscal year 2010.
Let me, let me then move approval of the final budget amendment for fiscal year 2010.
Motion has been made by Alderman Sistrunk to approve of the final budget amendment for fiscal year 2010. Alderman Sistrunk makes a motion. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Parker. Alderman Sistrunk, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussions saying none, all is in favor of Alderman Sistrunk? Motion please, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please respond by saying nay. Measure quill, passes. Next matter on the agenda is consideration of the approval of the holiday schedule for the calendar year 2010 and also, uh, the, of amending the holiday schedule for 2010 and approving the holiday schedule for 2011. Alderman Sistrunk?
I move that we approve amending the holiday schedule for the calendar year 2010 to include December 23rd as a city holiday and approving the holiday schedule as presented for calendar year 2011.
Alderman Sistrunk has made a motion to approve of amending the holiday schedule for the calendar year 2010 to include December 23rd as the city holiday and to approve the holiday schedule for the city of Starfield for the calendar year 2011, as requested. Alderman Sistrunk represents your motion. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Dimas. Alderman Sistrunk, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion, any discussion, any discussions saying none, all is in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please respond by saying nay. Measure quill, passes. And that will take us to interviews of candidates for vacant position, uh, head of the Starfield Electric Department. And, uh, the interview schedule has been pre-made, uh, so we will proceed in the order that's been prepared in the packet by personnel officers. That order is as follows. First interview will be Tommy Sullivan, followed by Shane Grantham, Sam Buchanan, Terry Kip, William John Gammel, Michael H. Stevens. In keeping with what has been the standard practice of this board, we will ask all applicants, while fellow applicants are being interviewed as a professional courtesy, uh, to allow them to interview with the room clear of other applicants, however recognizing that should any applicant choose to be in the room, that is their right to do so. Is there any objection to that? All right. Saying none, Mr. Sullivan, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, and if you could, just come forward and have a seat at the end of the table. And if you'd like, take a moment to introduce yourself and provide any introductory comments if you'd like to.
Could I make a brief intro?
You may.
All of you know Tommy Sullivan. He's worked for the city since July of '06 as Assistant General Manager of the Electric Department. Tommy worked for Ford County Electric Power for over 21 years, starting as a groundsman and retiring as their operations engineer before coming to the city of Starfield. Tommy attended Mississippi State. He's a registered professional engineer and has several other certifications through Tennessee Valley Public Power Association. So, please present to you Tommy Sullivan.
And Mr. Sullivan, would you like to make any introductory statements?
Uh, I appreciate Dr. Dimas to, to interview for this position. Um, I feel like, uh, I've got 36 years in the electric power industry and, uh, I feel like my four years plus at the city of Starfield has been fruitful and I look forward to serving in the current role of primarily engineering and operations as well as any, any, um, further duties that the board will say to stop upon me. With that, thank you.
All right, and, uh, this will begin questioning and I, I'll begin with a couple of questions and then I will, then turn it over to the board to ask any additional questions. The, uh, one thing I see fairly often in my position is that, uh, electric service is a basic necessity and, uh, as such it becomes, uh, one of the most difficult obligations for people that are on a low income or fixed income to meet. Do you have any ideas for policies, programs, or practices that, that make that as easy as possible?
Um, Mayor and Board, uh, as you're aware, about 80-plus percent of our revenue is directly to the Tennessee Valley Authority for paying the wholesale power bill. The rest is what the electric department operates off of. Um, the only ways that I can see is, is, uh, if, if, for research and development at the national level that we devise cheaper power generation, drive the cost down through those efforts. Uh, on a local level, we, we offer levelized billing and those type of things and, uh, try to educate the consumers about energy-saving techniques, weatherizing, buying Energy Star appliances, trying to reduce their usage. Um, I think one of the big advances to come and that it might be through the automated metering efforts to try to put some sort of device in the home, uh, that's analogous to a gas pump so customers can see the clicking off of the, in dollars rather than kilowatt-hours, which is a strange concept to most unless they're in the industry. So I see that as maybe a, a means to aid the customer to see what's going on and, and to help them reduce their usage in the cases where it's an economic necessity.
And, um, as you touched on, part of my next question, and that is, uh, I understand that there are mandates forthcoming in the future for time use rates from TBA. What are your thoughts on how we prepare to stay ahead of the mandate and maximize it to get the most out of it?
Uh, I feel the TBA has embraced the wishes of Congress and has, has passed a policy to, uh, implement green power, if you will, uh, up to about 20% of their generation. Their effort to do that is not, they're, they can make part of that mandate through demand response programs to shift that high daytime peak, whenever it might occur, which is a different time in the winter/summer, uh, to an off-peak period. And so the first thrust with TBA is the larger customers, where we already have, is, is fairly economical to install the metering required to record every, the, the data usage every 30 minutes so that we can segregate. Um, I think that we're going, we're going to face pressures, in fact, I know we are, to, to manage our load because TBA is going to come with wholesale rates that are time-based in April of next year. Uh, we're going to have to begin to develop incentives for our customers to follow, to follow to, to shift their load also. Uh, there are going to be stronger and stronger economic incentives to the city of Starfield as all, and as well to, to, to shift our customers' load. So the way that we're going to have to do that, uh, primarily are through, are going to be through price signals. That's the way it's been done in, in Europe and other places that are already experiencing the TOU, time of use rates.
Are we prepared, uh, or on track to being prepared from a smart metering standpoint to, to be able to keep up with the mandate for residential, um, time of use when it comes?
We proposed a, in this year's budget, a six-year plan to implement automated metering. The industry, everybody seems to be rushing out to install currently and has put a huge demand on vendors. Uh, there are only about four national vendors of the equipment, the meters themselves. And with this high demand, they're, they can pretty much call the shot. But we're, we're looking at several systems. Some of them are specifically more, are better suited to a municipal environment where the customers are closer together, so there, there are some communication options we can use. We have tried to implement a couple of pilot programs and, and the vendors, we've had some snags with the vendors where they weren't able to make their equipment work as promised. So we're still trying to work with one primarily in Jackson Smart Sync, who seems to be one of the leaders, and getting that product hot-looked. Um, we weren't able to test the meter. There were some communications, it was technical issues that had to be overcome, so we shelved that for, hopefully till the December, they're promising repairs. So, we're dabbling in it. We have plans, so we're talking with our, with Southeastern Data, uh, who's our consumer information system, about implementing those remote meter reads into the system and automating that process of getting a data, a data warehouse, if you will. So we're, we're dabbling in that arena. Um, we feel like, um, that it will fortify, by the time we get implemented, implemented over six, seven years, that, that, uh, that's when the, it will be necessary to happen. That's when the rates will continue to, the differential between on and off peak will continue to grow. And I see the electric cars probably is pushing that even faster once they come online.
Now, a little bit of questions from the board. Alderman Dimas?
I've got, um, a couple and I'm going to try to be consistent with all the, with all the candidates. Um, thanks for being here. Thank you for all your service you've done. I think it's commendable what we've been able to accomplish. My eight-to-five job, well, this feels almost more eight-to-five than my other job. Uh, I'm the Director of Sustainability for the Mississippi State. Um, and, and with sustainability and I'm very aware of the, the stuff that Ralph Nobles is doing and others when looking at thermal storage in relationship to the variable billing process. What are some things that we can do, or are there things that we can do from the city at the local level, the city level, or the electric department level? And you touched on smart metering is one thing, you touched on education, but are there other roles that the electric department can play in the new arena that we see electrical utilities in from the standpoint of, uh, whether it's variable billing, you talked about electric cars, I mean, I don't see those things as being too far-fetched from the standpoint of the way the world is going. I mean, Ms. Sistrunk, you know, it's got a pre-its, so, um, what are some things that we can do? Because I've seen municipalities across the country do some pretty innovative things at the local level to really push the envelope from that standpoint. Um, is there anything we can do at our level to do that?
Uh, I think of a question, Alderman. I think, uh, there, 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 there are several areas that can be explored. One, one aspect is we're in a buy or sell-off from TBA. So the, uh, solar generation that, we have some on the system now, it's located in MSU. So, yeah, it's, it becomes a complicated, uh, billing process, but TBA ultimately buys that power, turns around and re- and sells it to the city of Starfield, we turn around and sell it to MSU on paper.
Right.
And it's all used locally at the, on-site. Uh, TBA hasn't made any concessions as of yet. There are 158 distributors of electric power in the Tennessee Valley area. Uh, and our association is the Tennessee Valley Public Power Association and through legislative efforts and research and development, and, uh, there's been a, a very good dialogue established with TBA to, to get them to open up to new ideas. I think that, that, uh, something that we really need to do is participate with TBA and TVPPA and any, in, in, with those committees that are exploring these areas to see what we can do. Directly, I think, uh, to reduce our power bill would require, is going to require reducing our demand, uh, through maybe incentives to the customers, once we get to that point, to allow us to control their hot water heaters or their central units, the, the large users of power in the home.
Well, just to kind of-
I think it's a continuous process and, and, you know, and this, I read a lot of trade magazines that are very interested in the same thing, searching for answers.
Well, and I guess this kind of ties into my last question. President Keenum signed the President's Climate Commitment and this is a national program. And, and I just got back from my national meeting with all the, the Directors of Sustainability and one of the, that commitment states that they want Mississippi State to move towards carbon neutrality. So obviously that means equal carbon in as equal carbon out, whether we sequester carbon. But the biggest issue that universities are having across the country are the fuel mixes for their power suppliers and their electrical power suppliers. Um, and, and one of the things when we look at coal or whatever it may be, um, are you see the big issues are the ones that, for example, our 70% of the carbon output from Mississippi State is electrical power. And, you know, it's our power generation. And that's really because of the, the fuel mix that TBA currently has. Is there a role that the local power distributor can have in not only electrical production but in helping to facilitate changes in fuel mixes at the TBA level? And you talked about that from looking at the local-
Uh, currently I'm reading a text, uh, that looks at this from an engineering standpoint, uh, worldwide energy mix and the worldwide carbon load into the atmosphere, uh, primarily from coal. We're 50% plus worldwide of the coal. Uh, and, and the, the issue with the green power, the green power in the world is, is just a very minute part. I've seen numbers that say 3%, I've seen numbers that say less than 1%. Overall, it's, it's currently, it's very tiny for, for solar, wind, and, you know, biomass and those type of things. Um, I, I think there's a real issue with the energy density of these, these green sources currently. Uh, it takes a large area to install anything that's green because, uh, such as solar panels, uh, about 100 watts per square yard from a solar panel. So you need a lot of area to generate very much power and it's, it's not easily scalable because there, so there are obstacles to this, although, you know, we should, I think we need to support any way we can, in any way we, uh, can economically justify, uh, continued research and development and, and the various. My personal opinion about, uh, the best way, and that's based on reading some, some texts and striving to try to breast of this, is through nuclear. Uh, the current text that I'm, that I'm reading is, uh, their answer is natural gas to nuclear. Natural gas is much, puts a much less carbon load on the atmosphere than, uh, coal. Not much is generated with, with a crude oil, fuel oil. Most of, most of the carbon load comes from the coal. But a natural gas to a nuclear development, uh, is because of its scalability and energy density and the, and the huge amounts of power that we use. Uh, it's like an electric car, so it's like the Nissan Leaf with a 24-kilowatt-hour battery and you're going to, this is, uh, and you put several pounds on the roof of your home and sunshine in eight hours a day and you're generating about 4 KW with a law ton. Um, about six hours, you know, to charge the battery in your car.
Right.
It can be done, but it is going, it's going to be intensive. I hope that somewhat answered it.
It does, it does. And then my last question. Um, in your employment history, it says, what were the things you liked least about the position when you were listed as Assistant General Manager? And you said difficulty in developing a professional staff. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Uh, yes, sir, I can. Uh, I came from a system and I'm a firm believer that employees are the greatest resource of the company. And I, and I'm a firm believer in educating those employees. I think it's a three-pronged thing and we haven't been practicing. I think we need to, to coach the employees. Uh, I think your coaching skill is directly related to your experience and, and how much they trust you, you know, and how much you show them that you're a fair player. But, uh, I don't think that, I think we need to do employee evaluations. I think we need to, uh, reward those who perform, those who develop their skill sets and I don't see that we have that option currently. Um, I think it's a three, about a three-pronged thing. I think we need to, uh, obtain training, retain those employees through educational efforts and through employee evaluations and through targeted, targeted rewards for outstanding performance. So we, it's, it's been very difficult. I have, uh, I begged and pleaded and, uh, jumped in there with the employees and rolled my sleeves up and, but it's just so far you can, you can go with that until, until they see that this is a, a profession, this is a professional career path that they have chosen. They have the option to develop themselves, whether that be a meter technician through a, we need apprenticeship programs terribly bad to develop these young linemen through the TVPPA courses and the metering people. Uh, I think we as well as America, we, we're, we're in dire need of, of database people, computer literate people. We need, we need our employees to understand basic electricity and to develop, like the cashiers and the people who are directly interfacing with the customers, those customer service skills needed. We need some empathy and, you know, we need to be able to explain to them and, so.
Right.
I really see this as been a challenge or is a challenge.
Further questions, thank members of the board?
You obviously have strong technical skills and this, this is very much a management position that we're, we're interviewing for tonight. Jeremiah has asked and you've responded about managing people. Can you talk a bit about budget management? Because that would be another, um, big component of this job, is budget management.
Yes, ma'am. For the past three years, I've been the, played the lead role in, in putting together Starfield Electric Budget. Um, prior to that, with Ford County Electric, uh, I was managing the operation, engineering, the operations division and part of the engineering, the substation department. We had 20-some-odd substations that, we had very large budgets and the fleet, uh, we had a five-million-dollar fleet we were trying to manage. And I was doing all, I was, I was managing all that budget, budget, uh, data for that, preparing the budget and then administering those budgets. Uh, I have been administering to a large degree and, uh, of the construction budget for Starfield Electric since I came on board, Mr. Haddaway, because my experience turned it over to me to manage that within the, within the constraints that we had.
Further questions from members of the board?
I'd, uh, I'd like to hear you talk just a little bit about underground, underground utilities. I'm, I'm a big proponent of underground utilities. Is there, uh, would you have any opinion on when it would be suitable, uh, to go above-ground to underground and what advantages the underground might have over the, over the-
Overhead's easy to fix. It goes out a lot more because it's out there in the elements. Lightning strike, trees fall on it, cars run over. So there are more numerous outages and more saggers associated with it, but it's relatively quick to repair overhead lines. When an underground line goes out, uh, it's a very lengthy process, depending on whether spare conduit installed, if it's not, you can pull it out. But there are two, hopefully of most things, there are, there are the alternate source where you can switch out the bad section and put it back together. Uh, the, I, because of the clearing cost of right-of-way and subdivisions and, and other residential areas, I'm a very big proponent of underground. Uh, I think it's cost-effective. I think it's a direct payback from right-of-way clearing, cost savings in subdivisions and, uh, what I would term 200 amp circuit areas where we're, uh, I had looked at some of that with Ford County and, and put some numbers to it. It's been several years ago. I want to say that it was about a, once you had done, well, we were clearing on six-year cycles, we're in more rural environment. But I want to say after about the third cycle, that underground was broken, would break even just on right-of-way clearing costs. I will say that on the, on the big trunk lines, the 600-amp stuff, the lines radiating from the substation as it go out and tie together to form the backbone of our system, uh, it would be extremely expensive and probably not economic to put those underground. I think, uh, my recommendation would be to, to build out, as, as we continue to build and use of concrete and taller poles and try to make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing as we go and, but, uh, it is, my feeling is, is that heavy trunk lines overhead because of the cost, but the subdivisions and the other things should be underground.
Further questions? Any further questions? Are there any further questions? Any further questions? Saying none, Mr. Sullivan, would you like to say anything in conclusion?
Uh, I will say that Ms. Sistrunk, uh, was, was right on the money. I am very strong in, in engineering operations. That's where I spent most of my career. I have been, I have touched on, on, um, the other areas, uh, financial areas. I feel like that, that, what, that under my guidance that we've been over-accomplishing the engineering and operations area at the city of Starfield has been good. I think we've made some great strides. I think we've increased the reliability of the system. I think training of the, of the employees, the operations people, we've made some good, good headway there. I think we still have some challenges in the accounting area. I think we still have some challenges in the accounting areas and in our customer service areas. And I think I would welcome the challenge to apply myself in those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
And is Mr. Grantham here?
Yeah.
Ready? Go ahead.
Mr. Grantham, I'd like to ask you to take a seat.
I think most of you know Shane Grantham. Shane has worked for, as the office manager and collections manager for the department since 2004. Prior to coming to work for the city, Shane worked in production planning and scheduling in the garment industry. Shane has a bachelor's degree in business from Mississippi State and has completed certification with TVPVA as both a power supervisor and a power executive. Shane?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Grantham, thank you for being with us tonight. We will have some questions, but prior to getting any questions, do you have any introductory remarks you'd like to make?
Been with the Starville Electric Department for six years, well over six years now. As a collection manager slash office manager, I deal with the customers on a day-to-day basis. If a customer has a complaint with their electric bill or payment arrangements, just trying to keep the customer up to date, where we're at and what we offer and everything.
And I'll start with a few questions, and then I will open the floor for questions before. One of the issues I see most on a day-to-day basis is the struggle that low and fixed-income families have meeting the basic necessity that is having electric power at home. Do you have any ideas for new policies, programs, practices that help make it as easy as possible for low and fixed-income families to meet that necessity?
What I've been thinking about, Mr. Mayor, is at a point, you have to disconnect the customer, but you can help them along the ways by giving them an arrangement to pay, like if they pay half of it or three-quarters of the bill, maybe letting them, give them another week or so to prolong the payment. But if you look at it, if you give them three weeks or so, then you're on top of another due date. So then they're going to be behind on the next due date. There is, we're working with Ms. Spruill right now on trying to get something together to present to the algorithm, but maybe with a, trying to keep the customers from being disconnected, maybe through a phone system, or that you send them a text or an email or just a little notification to let them know, hey, look, a couple of days down the road, we're coming up on your due date or disconnect date. And then hopefully through that, they can call us and set up a payment arrangement. Or also, there are, like, prayer opportunity, Helping Hands, or other organizations out there that are able to help a customer pay their bill.
One of the, I guess, policy changes that's certainly on my radar that's forthcoming from TVA is time of use rates.
Yes.
How would you assess our current level of preparation for mandates that are coming? And what would you suggest that we need to do to be prepared to maximize what we can get out of those mandates?
The first thing we're going to have to do is install an automated meter reading program. With that, you will have to go out and buy new meters. You can do, I think it's, we're looking at it maybe two years down the road, we're going to have to install it. So you can start buying them now to each customer. That way, you can have the time of day use on a new meter. Right now, we're not capable of doing that.
Do you have ideas for how best to get there?
Through, hopefully, going out and try to get a bond or a grant, maybe, to help pay for this.
And at this time, I'll open the floor for questions from members of the board on the day.
Mr. Grantham, thank you for being here. I've got a couple of questions. In my role at Mississippi State as the Director of Sustainability, so mine, my questions will tie directly with that. You talk about variable billing, and a lot of that is certainly tied to energy efficiency and energy consumption. Are there ways in which Starville Electric can begin to explore opportunities to help educate? And education may be one of the ways to do that. But what are the opportunities that the Starville Electric Department has in looking at energy-efficient measures that can help us, not only with the variable billing aspect, but with the localized thing in which Parker was talking about of cost-saving measures even from, although they are sustainable in nature, from the environmental side, they're also energy-efficiently and cost-saving as well? What are some things that Starville Electric can do to help push that to the city at the local electric power level?
To help customers?
Right. What are some things, if, as a city, there are several cities across the country, and I don't want to put details in this, but there, I know of several municipalities who have taken great strides in pushing energy efficiency to the local level, to the user and to the end-user, whether that be commercial and industry all the way to the residential user. Are there ways in which, or what are some plans that we can look at to help that at the local level with the Starville Electric Department?
TVA offers like a home efficiency program. Is that kind of what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of ways, obviously, that TVA has, and I think there's some programs that we can capitalize on, obviously.
Yes, TVA offers that, and at one point, before I was hired, we used to have an employee that would go around with union contractors and stuff and try to install or instill energy-efficient stuff, but that position has faded throughout our company. So I mean, that might be something we need to look at, of opening back up that position, because that particular employee would go to, like Mr. Charlie Morgan when he was building all the apartments, and sit there and try to get them energy-efficient appliances and insulation and stuff like that.
One of the things that I know that Mississippi State has done, is President Keenum signed the President's Climate Commitment, which moves the university towards carbon neutral. And with carbon neutrality being something at the national level that several universities are looking at, one of the things that we know, energy is seventy-plus percent of our carbon production on campus. And we also know, and this is a national problem, that the electric power suppliers are not a problem, but they, they're one of the bigger pieces to the puzzle because of their fuel mix, whether it's coal or hydro or whatever it could be, nuclear. Do you see the local level, especially within the TVA system, do you see a role at the local level of looking at renewable energy, the implementation of renewable energy and even helping at the TVA level of the production of renewable and other policies that can help change system-wide?
To be honest with you, I don't know, but I mean, I would be glad to sit down with the TVA and have meetings about that and see where we can go to establish that process.
Good. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Further questions, if any members of the board?
I'll ask my question. I think two of the key components of this position are management of personnel and management of budget. I mean, as resume, you obviously have managed the operations, financial operations staff there at Starville Electric. Do you have budgetary responsibilities, or have you been responsible for large budgets?
No, ma'am, I have not.
Further questions, if any members of the board?
I'm interested in underground utilities. We live in a neighborhood that has underground utilities and see the benefits of it. And what are your thoughts on frozen cars, or when it would be cost-effective? At what point do you think it's cost-effective to go underground rather than overhead?
That is one of my long-term goals I have, Mr. Parker. Like neighborhoods like Roland Hills and Pleasant Acres, if you look, the majority of our utility lines are in the back of the neighborhood, are in the backyards. And so if we have an outage, it's a little harder to get back there because you can't use a truck. So if it's storming, you're on foot and on hooks climbing up and everything. And that's one of my long-term goals, to maybe take a neighborhood here and there and do a little bit at a time.
Further questions? Are there any further questions? Any further questions? Sitting down, Mr. Grantham, do you have any concluding comments you'd like to make?
I would like to say, as a short-term goal, if I was to get this position, I'd like to see computers in our service trucks. That way, we're better able to serve our customers. Like if a new customer comes in and turns on, gets an application and wants to turn on services, we can dispatch the truck straight to the truck instead of the, right now, the process that the employee comes back to the office. Another short-term goal is the automated meter reading system and also a better way to present to our customers about the disconnect notice. This is what I would like to do.
Thank you, Mr. Grantham.
Thank y'all. Thank you. Thank you for joining.
Randy, is Mr. Buchanan here?
Yes, he is.
Go ahead and sit in a minute.
Randy, let me speak to the board real quick before Mr. Buchanan comes in. I see on Mr. Buchanan's resume that he may have pending legal action against a former employer. It's on one of the last pages. My advice would be to not specifically ask him about pending litigation. He's let you know that it's going on, but the questions about that get us in some dice territory.
Can we ask about the, this reason believing was asked, and we can ask about that?
There's nothing about the litigation.
Yes. Right here. Where's that? Oh, I looked at that. Where was that? No, but where's the, right here, the city center?
Mayor and Board, let me introduce you to Sam Buchanan. Sam is a native of Greenwood, completed his bachelor's in electrical engineering at Mississippi State. While at State, well, Sam also completed certification as a power executive. While at State, Sam worked for Starville Electric as a student engineer. Upon graduation from State, Sam went to work for the Alabama Power Company and joined Tippel Electric Power in Ripley in 1978 as a staff engineer. Advanced to the General Manager of Tippel Electric. Sam has served as a board member for Tennessee Public Power Association, past president of North Mississippi Public Power Association, and past president of VPS of Mississippi. Sam?
Mr. Buchanan, thank you for being here with us tonight. We will have some questions here in a moment, but first, do you have any introductory comments you'd like to provide?
Well, let me make one correction. I graduated from high school at Greenwood, but I lived right in front of Greenwood. Dayworked for the Corps of Engineers when we moved around about every six years. Took me so long to go through Starville, I claim Starville Home too. introductory comments, I would say that all of my experience with Alabama Power and with Tippel has been in distribution, which is mostly what y'all have. Now, I designed some substations, some transmission line stuff, subtransmission line stuff. But, you know, I think as far as technicality would be a pretty good deal, you know.
I'll have a few questions, and then I'll open the floor for questions from the board. First I've got, related in your application, you indicated that in your previous position, you were let go, and you also indicated a willingness to discuss that more at the interview than I would.
Sure.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about what happened?
There were three individuals on the board that, for some reason that I don't understand, got a grudge against me. I think they were told some things that just wasn't true. There was nothing that I did that was dangerous to the public. There was nothing, no money missing or anything like that, you know. I think it was just a political grudge, is all it boiled down to.
Electric service is a basic necessity, and one of the issues that I see regularly in my office is the struggle that people on low incomes and fixed incomes have in making sure that they're able to have that basic necessity in the home. Do you have any experience with programs, practices, policies, or do you have any ideas of programs, practices, policies that make meeting that basic necessity as easy as possible for low-income families?
Well, at Tippel, we had something similar to what y'all have on heating and taking out money. This, ours was through the Good Samaritan Center, which was a volunteer organization there in Tippit County. Tippit County, in the area that TEPA served, was parts of some other counties, but it was primarily all done in Tippit County. Anyway, Good Samaritan Center was a voluntary group of people that collected money and food for those people that were in need. The churches, we funded a lot of people to the churches, all the churches. I contributed to the Good Samaritan Center myself.
Another issue that's on the radar for me, because I know there are policy changes forthcoming, is the time of use rate mandates from TVA. Tell me what you know about the mandates that are forthcoming, and please give any insight to what you think the best policy is moving forward for cities to get the most out of those mandates and to be prepared for them when they do indeed come.
Time of use rates are coming. That's just a fact. And the reason is, y'all know the reason? I'm just covering ground that you already know. Okay. I mean, it's not just because TVA says so.
Yeah, I mean, you may want to.
Okay. The reason the rates are coming is because so many billions of dollars to build a generation. Nuclear's the only reliable way to go now, cost-effective way to go now. You don't have the pollution problems and so forth of that. It's the, fixing, getting into engineering speak, I hope I don't bore you. The loads cycle up and down through the day. Noon time to five o'clock, we'll say, is going to be big usage from midnight to 6:00 AM, fairly little use. And they're just trying to even that out. They've got enough to carry the average, but they don't have enough for peaks. So they're just trying to level it all out, and that's the reason for the runs.
And do you have any ideas of how the city best prepares for mandates that are coming?
It's going to take a lot of coordination between Starville Electric and TVA to get some instruments in here to measure the large industries. Like, I know you have Safire, and I know you have State and some other large industries in here, to coordinate that and see how it will best work for them and to help them understand how to work. Everything that a factory does cannot be based on utilities, okay? We have to understand that. Labor costs during the night would be a lot more, for instance, than they would be in the daytime. Sometimes they'd rather pay the premium and not go on those rates. And they have to understand. And they have to understand what's good for them and we have to help them understand what's good for them rather than us telling them what's good.
Any ideas as it relates to residential service?
Residential service is going to be the biggest way that we can make everything even out because you can, for instance, heat water at night and have bigger tanks to hold it where you're going to heat it whilst during the daytime. That's just an example. There's a lot of metering systems out there now in a tight situation like Starville where there, I've forgotten how many y'all have got per mile, maybe fifty, fifty customers per mile or something like that. Lends itself to some more economic metering system for residential than like a co-op where I came from, where there's eight customers per mile and there's fifteen thousand miles, yeah, fifteen thousand miles of primary service, where y'all have got eight hundred. Everything being tight-knit will let you do some things with radio and so forth, radio controls and stuff like that. There'll be, there'll have to be some cycling to, for instance, cut off water heaters if you're reaching a peak, cycle them fifteen, thirty minutes. Most people would never notice and most people would go up with a chance to save on their life if they didn't.
Question from the board. All in depth. Thank you, Mr. Buchanan, for being here. My position in Mississippi State is I'm the director of sustainability, so my questions will deal directly with that. What are some things that you see that Starville Electric can do to help bring the city of Starville, whether it be the municipality itself or the users throughout the community, into a more energy-efficient mindset? And this deals directly with variable power? A number of things, you know. What are some opportunities, some strategies that you might want to bring to bear there that we can...
Well, I'd have to ask a lot of questions to answer that. Who does your billing now?
Mississippi, southeastern data.
Okay. Are you putting anything with Bill Stuffers or anything like that to help educate them? That's the first easiest thing. Second easiest thing is on your answering machine, you know, when you call in and ask Sam or whoever you ask for, in your waiting, you should hear something. There's some programs to help advertising the newspapers, energy riot program on TV, Columbus and that market, you know.
So education, obviously, being one of the biggest...
Education is the biggest, yes.
The...
And you're going to have to educate your builders, too. The home builders.
President Keenum signed the President's Climate Commitment, which moves the university to carbon neutral. And obviously, the university gets our power from Starville Electric. And one of the biggest issues nationally with universities that, with presidents that have signed the President's Climate Commitment is the relationship with the Electric Power Association or their electrical power provider because of fuel mixes, because, and it's not really a problem, but it's obviously one of the hurdles that have to be looked at from the standpoint of seventy percent of our carbon production is electric power. And when you look at the fuel mix predominantly coal, you know, what do you see, and you mentioned nuclear earlier, what do you see as the role of the local electrical power, the Starville Electric Department, for example, in advocating for renewable energy at the local level as well as the TPA level, the system-wide scale? You know, does the local level have a role in that conversation and how?
Oh, yeah. They need to promote solar energy and solar energy isn't strictly putting the black stuff up on your thing and running some DC wires in your house. There's other solar energy we can use, too. Preheating your water. Got a thing for my house. Run it outside and hook it up to a, it's just a passive solar. But anything that preheats that water saves electricity. One of the big challenges coming soon is going to be electric vehicles and how you charge them. That's going to be, that's going to be an issue that we managers are going to have to address.
Absolutely.
Further questions? Further questions?
With the department the size of Starville Electric, the department head needs to have strong personnel management skills and strong budgeting, financial management skills. Can you tell us a little bit about what you think you do well in those areas, what you think you might need to improve?
Are y'all familiar with the CPE course with TDPPA?
I'm familiar with some of them, yeah.
Okay. That course is for managers, not necessarily, some of them department heads in the larger cities and the larger co-ops, but also for the managers to help them have a rounded thing, which took, it takes about three years to complete, but I completed before I became manager of Tippa Electric. It helps you with, like, my background is not accounting, but it helps you with the accounting and understanding the terms that an accountant uses. It helps you with budgeting and it helps you with the legal problems that come up. For instance, in April, Tippa Electric had some tornadoes go through, some on Saturday afternoon and some more about 3:30 in the morning. We had customers calling in saying that they were trapped in our house because the wires were on their front porch. State law says you've got to have a back door, too. But aside from that, I had a computer that, I designed a system that would analyze the outage and tell you which, I didn't write the code, but I had, I designed the system that would tell you which breakers and fuses were out and things like that. It was made to work with alignment. It wasn't a, I know this and you do that, you know. It was a teamwork kind of thing. But anyway, we had customers calling in, and this is going back to the legal part of it. I knew that they didn't have power because I could look at the computer and I knew which switch was out. But I could not tell that customer, I said, to go out and just move the wires because you don't know who's hooked up a generator wrong. And they would, could have turned around and sued us because I would have said, you know. So you get into those legal issues, too, and it helps you teach, learn some of those things.
Further questions from the board?
I'd like to discuss briefly your underground power, you know, the pros and cons of underground power. And we, in your opinion, it would be feasible to take the overhead lines and put them underground?
If you've got enough money to throw at it, you can put everything underground, but it's simply an economic issue. Anytime you have concentrated loads, you can go underground, substations, for instance. A lot of factories won't underground lines going to them just for reliability. The pros and the cons. The con of underground is the expense, it's a lot more expensive. The pro is you don't have tree problems. That's where most of your problems come knocking power out is from trees. More than cars, more than light, you know.
Is it ever a case if you're, except for a building, they rode and we're having to move the, we're having to move transmission lines anyway, is it ever feasible to put those underground at that point?
Transmission lines or distribution lines?
Distribution lines.
Yes, it is. But you need to plan a lot further ahead than you do with an overhead line. An overhead line, you can put a piece of wire up and come back in a few years and take it down and put another one. It's alignment work. The other one is a whole lot of trouble digging it up, there's so much stuff in the ground. You need to plan well so that you'll have the right size wire to carry your power and not have to replace it because there's a lot more trouble and a lot more expense.
Any further questions from the board? Any further questions from the board? Further questions? Sitting down, Mr. Buchanan, do you have any concluding comments you'd like to make?
Comments or questions?
Either one.
Of course, there's always the question of souring benefits and stuff like that, but I don't really want to discuss that until you make me an offer, okay? Comments would be that I've worked, when I worked as a student, I worked as a lineman, you know. I was in the office doing maps and stuff like that. They put me in a buggy truck and taught me how to drive it and put me on a digger truck. And I enjoyed that. I enjoy working with people. Another comment is I am non-political. I don't, if you want me to do something for a political reason, that's fine. I'm not going to argue with you. Just tell me it's for a political reason and that's all there is to it. You know, if I say, I think we need to go this way because it's the best route, and you say no because of, y'all know some people and you know some problems it's going to cause, just say, no, we need to rewrite it this way because it's a political, it's fine with me. I've got no problem with that. But I don't, I don't play politics. I don't backstab and I don't, you know, I don't try to build myself up.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you. By the way, this is what I would wear if I were you. I don't wear sleep.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
I know that some of you know Terry, and let me tell you a little bit about him. Terry attended Anawaya High School and completed his bachelor's in electrical engineering at Mississippi State. He's a registered professional engineer. Additionally, he has attended the Owens Business School Leadership Program at Vanderbilt University and the TDPPA Certified Power Executive Program. Terry worked for TPA from 1974 until he retired in June of this year, advancing from an engineer to the position of general manager for Mississippi in 1995. He served in this capacity until his retirement. Terry has many noted credentials and affiliations that you'll find in Ubreated on his resume and application. So Terry, we're pleased to have you with us.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Mr. Kemp, thank you for being with us tonight. We will ask some questions for you in a moment, but first, do you have any introductory comments you'd like to make?
Well, I guess to begin with, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to come in and talk with you about the possibility of serving as one of the department heads for the city of Starville. I think his, my resume and as he said earlier, my background has been in the utility industry. I love that business sector and I had, I think, very privileged to have had, during those thirty-six years, an opportunity to work in all facets of it. I think since I've been in Mississippi, a large part of that time, I've had an opportunity to work closely with the city of Starville in a lot of capacities. And I was thinking back, it was interesting that I can remember back when you went from maybe one or two substations, now you're up to four. You've seen the whole demographics of the community and the service that you need for these individuals change. And it's just been a great and exciting time. And hopefully, if it works out well, it could be exciting for the future as well. But clearly, service, providing quality service at the lowest feasible rate, which I think is one of the goals of the electric department, is something that's always been dear to my heart and something that I would just like to be a part of because I think if you look to the future, this area, Starville, the whole surrounding area, although it's had tremendous success, I think the full potential's still yet to get here. I think there's still a lot of opportunities out there with new technologies, new changes, new things in that area. So, anyway, I'll just leave it at that unless there's specific questions you'd like to say. But again, thank y'all for the opportunity.
And I'll have some questions to start with, and then I'll open it for questions from the board after that. One of the things I come in contact with very regularly is the struggle of low-income families and people on fixed incomes in meeting the basic necessity that is providing electric power in homes. Do you have any ideas of programs, practices, or policies that make meeting that basic necessity for people on low and fixed incomes?
I think when you look at different sectors of your service area, I think you need to be fair and consistent and realize that everyone needs service and that electricity is almost a necessity now. And I think if you goes back to, first of all, it goes back to making sure that the overall system is reliable and overall competitive price is there. I think you need to make sure that you're always sensitive to watching the price and that helps not only the low income but all consumers of it. When you get into actually different types, and we talk about, you mentioned low income or fixed income, or maybe people that receive checks on a certain, that goes back to an opportunity to really look at your billing cycles. You have things like levelized billing that I think y'all may have used in the past that really helps those people budget their accounts so that they're not surprised. I think the other part is a continuous effort, working as the utility and as the city, to inform them of what they're doing, what they're using. Look for ways to help them be as efficient as they possibly can in how they use it. And here again, I think that helps them in the end run as well. Prevents the bill going from too high, levelize it so it's not surprising they're getting a hole to begin with. But I think there's factors like that. There's new technologies coming out. You'll hear more and more about prepayment that might have an impact on possibly deposits, allowing there to be a different type of coverage on your investment. But prepayment might be another way. Here again, is so that they can manage themselves what they're using and there again, I think it avoids surprising on their part and at the same time allows them to benefit from the use of electricity. Is that, is that kind of where it is? But I think it's a combination, do some rate issues, a lot of it is just staying close to them in education and making sure that, and I think that one of the responsibilities of the city and each of the departments is to really understand the customer base and try to figure out what those needs are. So you have an opportunity to be innovative in some ways, but you still need to be fair and consistent across the board.
Another issue that is very much on my radar because I know there are policy changes forthcoming is time of use rates and mandates coming from TPA. What are your thoughts on how we best prepare to maximize the benefits of time of use rates?
It's going to be a major adjustment. I think you're exactly right. During my career, I actually, when I first began work TPA even in Mississippi, we were on a demand-energy rate component before the end-use rates. There are distinct advantages to it, but I think you touched on it very succinctly in the fact that you've got to understand where the opportunities to capitalize on that so that it can be the benefit to you. As you go to a demand-energy component, a lot of it is just going to be, have a lot of real-time information, some more information. I think you'll see that right now, sorry, rolling that into your larger customers, Mississippi State, your industrial base, is to win their use at time of use rates. And so you're going to, they're managing a lot of those. I think when you go back to the general population and your commercial and your residential, as a utility, you're going to have to better be able to manage that as a class, not as individuals. So technology will help in that. And here again, some rate incentives. There'll be some new rate products that I would suspect that will be developed as you go forward. go forward. They'll reach down into the different classes, not just the industrial, but down into more the commercial and the residential. So I think that will help, but having real-time information and managing that's going to be critical as you go forward. I do think you've got a window. It's going to be, I'd say, in reality, you know, I can't remember exactly, probably you'll have an implementation in April. So typically, that's going to take months to actually get the first wave out, so you've got about a two-year window to really start getting geared up and prepared for that. But there will be some opportunities and do the density and the demog, I mean, the diversity in Starkville between industrial, we've got Mississippi State sitting there as a large load, plus all of the commercial, there might be some opportunities to really try to shift some load and take advantages of low-end power and that's where you're headed.
Thank you, Terry, for being here. As you know, my role at Mississippi State is sustainability and my questions will tie directly into that. With your experience with TVA and knowing the systems that TVA has and the programs that they have, what are some ways that we can take that, we can build on that, and we can implement energy efficiency measures at the local level?
Oh, well, I think you're already doing some of those. Part of it is being, participating in some of the programs, and we'll talk about Green Power Switch is maybe a good example of that. That is an example of a program that's evolved over time. And I think if there's a real interest, that's what's going to happen, is you really start going on the sustainability, is to take in the benefits of the past and then try to massage it a little bit to really refine the program. But I think energy efficiency and wise use, to me, should never be, I mean, that should be a core element of all of the services, you know. And that's a continuous educational process to help people understand what a kilowatt hour is, almost to that point, and how they can get the most value from that energy. And I'd say from residential all the way to the commercial. But a lot of education will help. I think, and Energy Ride is another example, as y'all have been involved with for a long, long time. Here again, creating an awareness, Green Power Switch, we're doing some work over at Mississippi State University on alternate generation type things like that. Those are the type of programs I think that you'll see more and more of. I think it's going to be a little bit slower in replacing capacity from a bigger standpoint and supplying to the city, but an individual might can take advantage of it here again to control their cost on a local basis. That's kind of where green power is. Now, if we can get contractors to the point where, and I say contractors, suppliers of equipment like on solar, to get bound with a price points to the point where you can actually get those installed and then benefit from them without an incentive, I think we're on the way down the road. But that is going to take a little time.
Oh, I will. Well, and on that, with President Kennedy signing the climate commitment, that moves the university to carbon neutral. And one of the biggest things nationally is how you reach carbon neutral. And it's being recognized that electrical power providers are one of the key components of that, when they look at fuel mix and other type things. You touched on solar, you touched on green power with energy blocks and purchasing of renewable energy. Does Starkville Electric have a role in the production of renewable energy? And then in what, at what capacity do they then help advocate to the valley level and system of production of renewable energy?
I don't know if I really know the answer to that question right now. I think a lot would determine on how much Starkville wants to get into that business. I think that would be the start. And if you really wanted to go in that direction, which is a possibility, there would have to be some contractual arrangements. And our vision in the future, I look at in the future, I think there's going to be opportunities to do that. But here again, right now with the all requirements contract, and I don't know exactly, that may not be where you're going, but if the city of Starkville were to own its own generation or to create that, we'd have to work through some contractual changes. Let's not say it's, but experience has said that in some larger systems, it's really hard to make them cost-effective. But here again, that would be a, if the city were involved or interested in that, I know of some other communities around the valley that have started some activity in that. The first step is what they call seven states. I don't know if Starkville is a member of that or not. Do you know?
I don't know.
It's a group of distributors. They've actually are buying ownership in generation outside of TVA. So they, but here again, that would be peaking units. Those are located in West Tennessee and North Mississippi. Same concept, not say that it's not possible, but that's something I think we need to think through, get lined up, and then here again, make sure it's reliable and dependable. That's the other things. But right now, the way the contract would be reading, I mean, and that would probably take at least about a five-year window, I'd say, to make that amendment if we were to start through.
Thank you.
My final question. Further question?
In my opinion, this position requires strong people management skills and strong monetary management skills. Could you tell us a little bit more about your background in those two areas?
Okay. I guess I have, over my career, I have managed various groups. I think on the resume it says, you know, I'd probably, when I was in West Point, it was over a hundred various people. I think one of the things I look back on success is two things. One is employee satisfaction, which really goes back to the heart of what we're talking about, employee development. So I think you're exactly right. Without having all the employees engaged and enthused and part of the process, I think you've got a weakness. I really believe in team play, teamwork, and effective delegation, getting people to that point. So working with people, either on staff or collaborative in other departments. I think that's the other exciting thing about here. It's a lot like TVA, you know, we'd almost be in departments ourselves, but the key in success would be in work across department lines together in a collaborative effort. So maybe that gets to the point of employees. But I think too on that, one of the targets is setting good goals, giving continuous feedback to them on how you had reached to them, and to help them grow and assume more responsibility as they go forward. Because I do think you've got an excellent staff here. I think we've always, from my standpoint and outside looking in, it's always been a joy to kind of work. And if you look at the successes and reliability and cost control, I think the electric department has done a good job. As a budget standpoint, I believe that once you get a budget, you need, if you have to, you need to get innovative to stay within it. I mean, you know, it's just a matter of, budgets are driven by results. You set out with a goal or objectives in place, and then you fill your budgets, and then it's an obligation of not only the management team, but you want to get all employees to buy into that so that they can control it. I'd say over my career, that's one of, that's always been one of my grades at the end of the year, did you stay within budget. And so I have no problem with it, and that's what you expect. I do think it is real challenging sometimes, because the first thing they say, well, what are you going to do this year, more than cut twenty percent? You know, it's, but that creates an opportunity for innovation and new ideas and change. And I like change too, so that's not a problem.
Further question?
I have an interest in underground utilities. Could you go over maybe the pros and cons of underground utilities and when, in your opinion, it would be feasible to take existing overhead and put them underground?
Experience, if you looked at the rate structure, most of that, the rates are built on overhead. And the reason being is still a little bit more, it's cheaper. It's quicker to put in, so you've got a time element, it's probably cost, you don't have to worry about clearances and a little bit of that factor. And then you also have, it's easier to maintain and repair if you have a fault. I'll do the flip side experience on underground is that it is less susceptible to certain things like fallen trees, trucks, stuff like that. So in some ways, it could actually make your system more reliable. From a look standpoint, you hear a lot of that, it definitely has that in place. And then there is some safety aspects that you talk about for as contact with overhead wires versus underground. So I think it's a balance, but generally speaking, in today's, and it's because majority of it, you've got density and connection of service, it's a lot more cost, well, it's cheaper to go overhead than it is to go underground. And if you go underground, in some cases, there's a conscious effort to do it, you have to do more planning upfront. But I do think that's where a lot more people are interested in it, just from the aesthetics look and things like that.
Any further questions?
One more thing to that point on underground is that it is a, my experience, it is a kind of an exponential cost based under your voltage level. So it's so much easier to deal with, say, a lower voltage into a house than when you get into a distribution line or even when you make into transmission line. We actually got into one project that I was working on, the Berry 161 KV line, and it can be done. But it's, it is a huge project, and so then you have to weigh benefits and costs.
So now, Mr. Kemp, do you have any concluding comments you'd like to make?
Other than just again, thank you for the opportunity. I think Starkville is a great place, it's got a great future, and working for the department and staff. And let me say here again, as a compliment to you and the current staff, I think they have established the reputation, I mean, of a reliable system, an ideal position in the fact that the rates are as low as anywhere in Mississippi. I mean, that's a good thing. And so I think that's a compliment to you and so, and the staff over there, I just wanted to mention that as well. And so, but thanks for the opportunity and hopefully we'll get to talk again sometime.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor and Board, let me introduce you to John Gammel. John lives here in Starkville, holds up a master's degree in business administration and a bachelor's in mechanical engineering from Mississippi State. John worked as the superintendent of generation with Greenwood Utilities from 1998 until 2007. He managed electrical generation, substations, and water production departments. John joined Bad Cotton Wilcox in West Point in 2007 as their project manager, and has recently been, his position was eliminated in an economic layoff. While in Greenwood, John was active in leadership for the Marrow Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, the Exchange Club, and other community organizations. John, thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
And Mr. Gammel, thank you for being here today. We will ask some questions for you in a moment, but first, I'd like you to have the opportunity to make any, their voting comments if you'd like.
All right. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Kind of interesting being introduced, that's kind of neat. As you said, I am a resident of Starkville, so, you know, I do have a vested interest in Starkville and the development of the city. My wife is a lifetime resident of Starkville, schoolteacher at Henderson Ward Stewart, teaches gift to third grade, so been there for seventeen years. We have a son, two-year-old, goes to Emerson Family Schools, so very vested in Starkville and the direction Starkville's going.
I'll start our questions, and after I ask a few questions, I'll open the floor for Mr. Gammel. And it's a first, I want to ask, is to make sure I understand the situation with your previous employment. You left on good terms?
Yes, yes, yes. They, when I started, they had approximately three hundred and fifty employees, and when they made their cuts, when I left, they were down about one fifty, so. Stated decline, I think.
One of the issues that I see a bunch is the struggle of meeting the basic necessity of electricity with low and fixed income families enduring on a monthly basis. I'm interested in how many ideas you have of policies, practices, procedures that help make it as easy as possible for low and fixed income families to meet that basic necessity?
With my experience with Greenwood Utilities, we did run across that, especially in the harsher times where you either have, you know, hard summers where a lot of times the bills are also going to be higher in the summer and the winter, and those are the times you really need your heat and air, just to have a manageable home to live in. One of the things, you know, we had certain policies where if it's above a certain temperature, below a certain temperature, we would not cut off customers for non-payment. Some of the things that we looked into with Greenwood Utilities is some of the people for, you know, a lot of those customers were cash-based customers. We looked into offering them a prepay where they could actually somewhat bank the electricity. Certain customers just tend to get cut off more, either by not having a regular income or having a low enough income where it was hard to meet those payments. So we looked at a couple of different options. We didn't actually implement that. We didn't see enough interest, you know, from the customers, but there are other, I'm sure there's other avenues out there that could look at that for low income. We did do a program where we allowed customers to put an extra dollar in every bill to go toward needy customers. We would let local civic organizations decide who got that money, so we would stay separate from that. But that was a program that I think worked well and, you know, obviously, we'd, you know, allow them to put more than one dollar to go toward needy families.
Another issue that's very much on my radar, because I know there are policy changes forthcoming, or time of use rate mandates from TVA. Can you tell me a little bit about what you know about mandates that are coming and how we can both be prepared and maximize the potential under the rates?
Right. And I actually talked recently with Marcus Stone at Ford County Electric and about some of those issues through TVP, TVA. You know, as far as my experience, we've, in Greenwood, we, I feel like, you know, those time of use rates are best used for industrial customers. They're the ones that are really the ones that are able to make the biggest impact on when the large loads come in. It's really hard for residential customers. You're going to have certain demands that you're going to have in the morning, you're going to wake up, either turn the heat on or turn the heat off, air, run your hot water heater. In the evenings, you're going to do the same thing, come back. You know, there's certain cycles that you can avoid. You know, there's developments where you can, say, run your washer and dryer at three in the morning to, you know, possibly curb some of those usages. But, you know, real life, I don't see a lot of benefit on the residential side. Commercial, you're stuck with your hours, you don't have a lot of options, most of your load's going to be heat and air. So I don't see a lot of benefit there. You know, I try to work with TVPVA and other organizations to talk to TVA, just to kind of let them be aware of that. You know, maybe look at some of that, and obviously, it's easier to implement on the industrial side because you've got a lot less customers. You know, there are time of use meters out there that you can use, and you can work with them, possibly to, you know, move some of their load. But as far as the billing, like I said, I'm aware of it. I think that's definitely going to be one of the challenges coming down the road, TVA members, but I don't think there are any easy answers. A lot of that depends on the road TVA wants to take. lot of that depends on the road TBA wants to take.
Questions from members of the board?
I'll do this. Thank you, Mr. Gammel, for that. I'm the director of sustainability of Mississippi State, so my, my questions will tie directly with that. What are some things that you think are some ways in which Starkville Electric can help implement or spread, and I don't know what the proper word is there, a more energy efficient mindset, and it ties directly in with what you were talking about with variable billing and some of the other things, within our customers of Starkville Electric Department?
Well, I, I think there's a lot of things out there that really are, you know, low cost or, you know, no cost, but a lot of it just kind of goes into your, your frame of thinking. A lot of construction, you can do a lot of things, whether it, that are basically passive ways to affect your heating load and obviously your utility load. You know, maybe you could talk with some builders and, and talk to them, and try to implement some of those options out there, whether it be, I mean, there's certain formulas you can use to calculate the, the right eve size to maximize your, your energy efficiency. There's obviously more energy efficient windows and heating units and water heaters, you know, because those are going to be your big loads. There's a lot of things you can do there, you know, you can do mass absorption where you have say, a concrete floor on your south side in the wintertime, where you can actually get a lot of that heat through the windows and absorb that and, you know, disperse it slowly over time. So, there's a lot of passive type things you could do, but a lot of that'll have to be new construction, and obviously that wouldn't be most of your customer base, but, you know, whether it be ceiling fans, blinds, curtains, there's a lot of, you know, low cost things that you could do. Along those lines, again, your biggest changes will be on your industrial side, trying to work with them, your large customers, to see what, what you can do to help them become more efficient. And I think that's where your benefits would come from.
Part of the, with President Kenham signing the President's Climate Commitment, that moves the university towards carbon neutrality. And one of the challenges there is working with the electric power provider, because electrical power is 70% of our carbon load on campus. And when you look at the fuel mixes of electrical power providers all over the country, you know, obviously there's a lot of talk of how, what role the universities, what role the local electric provider plays with the conversation of how fuel mixes change and even renewable energies.
Right.
You know, what, what do you see as a way that Starkville Electric can become involved with that conversation, providing that, you know, with, with Mississippi State obviously purchasing power from Starkville Electric?
Right, there, there are a lot of challenges in that area, there, there are a lot of avenues out there for energy efficiency, a lot of carbon and, and other pollutants. You know, I worked directly in generation, we had coal units, natural gas, and diesel. So, we were kind of unique as a small utility to have that range. You know, prior to about 1990, Greenwood Utilities, for the previous 15 years, operated their large units that were either coal or natural gas, on natural gas. Once natural gas prices went, you know, if you ever drew that line, it was almost a flat line, all of a sudden it went from $3 to $10. All of a sudden, coal became a viable option again, so we had a look at that, and they still had coal permits in place and, and obviously operated on those scenarios, but, you know, obviously that's not the best scenario for your, your carbon output, but financially for Greenwood, that was their best decision, I think. As far as what's out there, you know, there are a lot of challenges, because if you look at solar, you know, it's very cost prohibitive, as are most of the options out there, you, you spend a lot of money on batteries, and you got to worry about your battery disposals, you got a lot of money in your solar arrays and, and their lifespans. If you look at wind, that's a very economical option, obviously no fuel cost, but you're just about, West Texas is your main area where you're going to have that set up, because that's where you're going to have your, your constant winds that afford that. I, I think a lot of things are going to go with nuclear, I think that's where a lot of people are looking to go, and they're looking at designing nuclear facilities to be zero discharge. And I think that's where nationally, I think we're going to end up needing to go, to be environmentally friendly, although nuclear doesn't really sound environmentally friendly, you know, you can, you can do a lot of things with that waste and reuse it in other ways.
Was Greenwood an energy?
It is an energy, transmission connection. We had, we were actually part of a joint action agency, municipal energy agency of Mississippi, which is eight cities that, that pooled their resources as load consumption and bought power as bulk units. Greenwood was about 52% of that, some of the other cities were like Durant, Leland, Hattiebina, Coziesco, a lot of those are some other small cities, but Greenwood was about 52% by load. We had a lot of contracts and then had an energy low falling contract above our baseline contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions?
You've not heard this question five times, but I'll ask it, this will be the fifth time. To me, two of the key components of a successful candidate for this position are personnel management skills and financial management skills, budget management skills. You obviously have managed people in the past, could you tell us a little bit about how you approached that, and could you tell us if you've had any vegetarian management experience?
I, I've had both. Directly out of college, I went to work with Greenwood Utilities managing 40 people. It was a little unique situation that one of my employees was a friend of my father's, had known me since I was six. One of the employ, we managed two power plants, one of the power plant managers had been there 30 years, the other one had been there 25 years. So, I, I was immediately in charge of people that were, had more experience than I had each. So, unique experience, but I knew coming out that they were, they knew their system, they knew their facilities, it wasn't my place to come in, swing the big stick. First thing I did with each of them is sit down and just ask questions, you know, you teach me, you know, what, what do we have, what are our challenges, where do we need to go, what, how can I help you? And, and that's kind of the philosophy I took, is you have to make hard decisions, and that's part of management, but you don't have to make enemies to do that, you can, you can make equal decisions. Like I said, you don't have to swing the big stick, you don't necessarily have to target being their friend, but that's the kind of person I am, I'm going to probably end up being, I can, I, I'm just that kind of person, I guess. On the budgetary side, I managed 120 accounts, capital and operating management, maintenance accounts for both of those two plants, and did that the whole time, that included forecasting for future, and also managing those throughout the year. I also was in charge of most of those large capital projects myself, and managed other engineering firms and construction firms during that process.
Further questions?
I have an interest in underground utilities, if you could go over the pros and cons of your opinion of the pros and cons of underground utilities, and, and at what point would it be feasible to take an overhead line and put it underground?
Obviously, it looks nice, the city looks a lot better. You don't have to worry about trees falling, knocking your line down, trucks running into poles, you know, there are a lot of obvious advantages to that, some of the disadvantages are when you have an issue, you don't, you can't just drive by and find a squirrel on the ground, say, oh, here it is. You know, there's equipment in there to track it down, estimate your distance from your point, but repair wise, you don't have as quick a repair time, it's a little bit more labor intensive, obviously you've got to dig it up, it's just a little bit, it's a lot more hassle, obviously it's more cost to put it in the ground versus on pole. Personally, I think that's the way to go, overhead lines, like I said, they're easy, they're less expensive, but I, I think they don't present aesthetics that, that most people look for these days.
Further questions? Any further questions? Any further questions? Say now, Mr. Gammel, do you have any concluding remarks, if you'd like a minute?
I, I guess a couple of things, you know, I, I have a lot of experience in different areas, and I think that gives me a, you know, a pretty good head up on what's going on out there. I had experience on the engineering side, whether it be, you know, designing boiler on the engineering side through Babcock and Wilcox, the contracts, actually on both sides of the contract where you're trying to sell an item and have to present that contract, or you're on the purchasing side, which I was from utilities. So, I'm aware of a lot of the, I guess, dance, that you might want to call it, on the contracting side of, of what's out there, what, you know, what you need to look out for. I have experience through municipality. Greenwood was a different setup than Starkville. Greenwood had a free person commission that was appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council on three stager terms, and they were an autonomous board from the city, we had an autonomous budget, we had our own capital reserves, and we basically had managed ourselves. The only impact that the council and mayor had was who was on the council. We, we still had a great relationship with the mayor and the council, you know, we had an open door, they could come any time, give us a call, and we would work with them through any issues that they had. So, I had that experience through municipalities. I have, you know, several contacts and I know quite a few people in the TBA and the energy system, so I have a lot of people that I know I can ask questions to and, and get counsel on some difficult issues. I'm a Starkville resident, lived here for three years, the rest, other than my time in college at Mississippi State, I lived my whole life in Greenwood, so I'm, I, I'm not looking for a temporary job, I'm looking for a permanent position. And as I said, I have a vested interest in Starkville. In Greenwood, I was very active in the Chamber of Commerce and various civic clubs, did a lot of, did the presentation circuit there for a while, you know, I've, I've been called on to do impromptu 30-minute presentations, you know, it's just part of the job. I think one of the key things for Starkville, Starkville Electric is, you know, first, you need to be safe, keep the employees and the citizens safe. I think Starkville needs to, Starkville Electric needs to be a part of the face of the city, have good customer relations, and I think they need to, you know, look, look out for the rates and, and your customers. That last one's a little bit harder to do, you get a little less control on that, but do what you can. And, and that's kind of how I see, I guess, Starkville Electric and what is out there. I guess generally, I had a question on, you know, what kind of timeline are you looking at for this position? What, I guess what's next, is this say, a first interview, and it'll be narrowed down to possibly a future interview, or what's the procedure?
The board will take up the matter on Tuesday night, it's a discussion matter, they can take action at any number of places, they, they might choose to call back interviews, or they might choose to go forward and appoint somebody, but that will be something where the, the picture should be a lot clearer after Tuesday night.
And I guess more is a general question, you know, I have a lot of, my experiences with Greenwood Utilities, and I know, you know, ins and outs of Greenwood, I guess, as far as the Starkville position, what kind of relationship generally has the general manager and, and the council and the mayor had, and how, I, I guess, do you see that relationship, you know, where do you look for that to be?
Yeah, it's, it's been very good previously, and the retiring manager, of course, has been with the department 36 years.
Right.
So, prior to this decade of services, this manager, he was very much an institution in sitting right now. Generally speaking, the relationship between this board and, and department heads has been very good, and I would characterize this healthy relationship, this is an active board, it's, it's, there, there are, are questions commonly, but also lots of support, lots of questions are answered for department. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gammel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
That's fine, yeah, thank you. There's even a sheet on the back there if you can take notes on it.
Let me introduce you to Michael Stevens. Michael is a native of Water Valley, completed his bachelor's degree in agricultural education here at Mississippi State. Michael grew up around public utility works, as his dad has worked in this field for years. After graduation from state, he went to work as a power, power line specialist with the University of Mississippi. He briefly left the power industry, taught at the high school level, and then went back to work for the city of Water Valley in 2003 as a line foreman in their electric department. Michael is currently an engineering technician with the city of Oxford, and is looking for growth opportunities. Michael, walk.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Stevens, thank you for being with us tonight.
Yes, sir, thank you for the opportunity.
We'll have some questions in a moment, but before we do that, I'd like to give you the opportunity to make any introductory comments, if you'd like.
Thank you. Like Mr. Boyd said, I grew up in this industry. Four and five years old, I was out with my dad, holding a flashlight while they refused a line, or helping him learn how to refuse a line when I was six. I probably shouldn't tell this, but 14 years old was the first time I climbed a pole. 15 to 16 years old, first time I learned how to operate bucket trucks and line trucks. I don't know if any of you remember, a tornado hit Water Valley in 1984, school was out, I was working, digging post holes, digging holes by hand for, to set power poles. While I was here at state in 1994, I'm, I'm sure all of you remember the ice storm, dad called, when you get out of class, you're coming to Water Valley. For a week straight, I'd come to class, go to Water Valley and work till 10 or 11 o'clock at night, come back to Starkville, go to class the next day. It's just in my blood. Nothing excites me more, or gives me more heartfelt approval, gratification, when I turn somebody's lights on after they've been out after a storm. I just, I love, I love the industry.
And, Mr. Stevens, I'll have a, a few questions, and the point I've finished, I'll open the floor for questions from members of the board. One of the issues I, I see often is the struggle of meeting the basic necessity of providing electricity to homeless families on low income, families on fixed incomes. Do you have any ideas of policies, practices, procedures that help me, make meeting that necessity as easy as possible?
That is hard, and it's fixing to get really hard. Some of you probably have heard of time of use rates, it's really going to affect low income, fixed income people. The middle of the day, the rates are going to be really high. Part of my job in Oxford as a TBA member services is providing advice for energy efficiency, how to use your electricity, gas, water, how to use all of it wisely. how to use your electricity, gas, water, how to use all of it wisely. Uh, it's hard to make, I just had a conversation with a, a couple this morning, as a matter of fact about this. It's hard to make people believe that you can live comfortably in a house that's seventy-eight degrees in the summertime or, at the same thing, sixty-eight degrees in the wintertime. It took me several years to get my wife used to it. Now, now she's used to it. You know, we don't walk around in the wintertime in bare feet and shorts and no shirt or a t-shirt. My kids have on house shoes, pajama pants, and we're comfortable. Yeah, but it, it's all a matter of, uh, personal preference. The rates are going to keep going up. I mean, that's just a matter of life. What you've got to do is get these customers to understand how to use it wisely.
You've already spoken to, of course, maybe my next question will set, uh, another thing certainly on my radar, because I know there's lots of policy changes coming with it, is time of use rate mandates. What, what do you know about mandates that are coming and, uh, what ideas do you have for how we both meet the mandates and maximize, uh, the, the potential for opportunities under the mandates?
A lot of utilities, especially municipal, don't have AMR metering. I'm not sure of the city of Starkville. I know the city of Oxford doesn't. We're working into it. Uh, the city of Water Valley doesn't. And that is a, a large expense that's going to be incurred. About, that's about the only way to record, recoup that cost is to have AMR metering. That's the only way. What TBA passes to Starkville, sad to say, we've got to pass it to the customer or we're all going to go bankrupt.
So is your sense that, uh, automatic metering, uh, helps to free, uh, the, the costs associated with the mandate? In other words, uh, it's, it's not meeting the mandate ultimately punitive to the consumer potentially?
Yes, yes. I mean, ultimately, the consumers got to pay. Uh, for a long time, not time of use rates, but commercial meters, they are the ones that have been absorbing the majority of the cost. They're the ones that pay the higher monthly charge, uh, albeit they do have a little lower kilowatt hour charge, but they pay a higher monthly charge. That's been offsetting residential use on, uh, demand meter, uh, end of, end of use metering. Now, a time of use, there's no way to keep from, keep it off of residential.
Paul McCarver, if you had a question?
To the base of my question. Uh, a lot of things with AMR, there's so many, it's just like a computer. What you buy today could be obsolete tomorrow. Uh, a lot of co-ops, EPAs, uh, sad to say, they have more money and they have better, I'm not going to say better lines, but, uh, well, better ser, not better service. There's power line carrier meters. A lot of co-ops have that. But the problem with power line carriers is you're going to start finding all your bad spots in your lines, all your loose connections, and it's a large upfront cost in installing the, the equipment in the substation because that's where it comes back to and then it's transferred to the office. Cell phone capability meters is probably going to be the way to go for a municipal. It's cheaper over the long haul.
What about broadband?
Broadband, DSL or fiber?
You're more advanced than that.
Uh, broadband is good. Again, you've got to get the infrastructure in. Uh, you know, AT&T's talking about fiber to every home. That's not going to happen. You know, if they put fiber into every home, that'd be great. We jump on a couple pairs of their fiber and pay them a little monthly charge and, and go with it. But still, somebody has to maintain those lines. And I can promise you from experience, a lineman is fixing to raise nine kinds of, kind of, if he's got to start following the fiber route. It's a big expense in that also. The splicing equipment, you buy a splicing trailer, which is what you would have to have on a, a magnitude of this scale. Uh, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars. It supplies fiber and I've done it. I mean, it is meticulous work, sitting here with little wires as small as a pin. So getting qualified personnel to work on fiber or DSL is going to be the same way.
I think you've got a love of the.
I apologize. I apologize.
What, well, I guess the essence of, of my question with it, correct me if I'm wrong, which picture will be the case. Uh, my, my understanding is that, I guess, the two common ways, uh, to, to build your automatic, uh, meter system is either with a, a cellphone, uh, system or a, a thin mesh broadband network. And I guess that would be DSL.
Yes, yes. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know of any municipals or co-ops that have it. Most of them have power line carriers or cell phones.
Okay.
Simply because of the maintenance of it, the upkeep, who's going to work on it.
Oh, dear. Well, thank you, Mr. Stevens, for coming. First off, I'm glad you didn't wear any red and blue.
Hey, I, I got to get away from all that.
Come dressed as a black bear or anything like that.
Yes, sir.
Um, at Mississippi State, I'm the director of sustainability. So those will be the, where are my questions? Just want to tell you that.
Can I, do you know Ann McCauley at, at Ole Miss? She's the director of sustainability there.
No, we're with Jim Morrison. Okay. You know Jim Morrison? Strategic planning.
Yes.
Um, now, in the, um, in your letter, in the letter you had attached and that you sent today, the letter from David Sparks, actually, talks about, as a result of your, your, your leadership and commitment to customer service, the energy efficiency program has been successfully increased by the city's residential, commercial, industrial customers. Talk a little bit about that because I, that's one of the things I'm really interested in from the Starkville level. You know, what are the things, and I'm very aware of the TBA programs, but what are the things we can do from a Starkville Electric standpoint to help change the mindset at the municipal or, you know, at the user level from the basis of energy efficiency?
Uh, we have a, a great new program started called Green Schools. Offered through, it's not, it's through TBA, but it's, it's another federal program. Where they, the school kids, the children are involved in reducing the energy usage at their school. They create a committee of students and, and faculty and staff, and they define ways to reduce the electricity usage in the school. I'm a firm believer that, you know, as I said earlier, it's, to reduce electricity is just preference, you know, a matter of personal preference. If you get the children involved in it, they're going to get the parents involved in. You know, they're the ones that's, mama, turn off the light. Uh, they love to write their teachers, they got a little ticket book, they can write their teachers when they walk in there and the light's on and nobody's there.
And see, my dad was telling me to turn off the lights.
Yeah.
Now, that's a program through Oxford Utility.
Yes, sir. Uh, we offer it through TBA.
President Keenum signed the president's climate commitment and part of that is reaching, are taking the university of carbon new trial. One of the things nationally with sustainability directors is, is how do you work with your local electric provider so that you can work with fuel mixes? Because at Mississippi State, seventy percent of our power, or seventy percent of our carbon load is electricity, electric power. And then obviously through TBA, a large part of that is coal based. So, you know, we have a lot of work there to really work with the electric power provider to, to deal with that. What role do you see the local provider, whether it's through renewable energies or whether it's through looking at the, the larger fuel mix at the valley scale? How do you see that, how do you see that work?
I also work with, uh, renewable energies in Oxford. I have current, we're currently working on bus shelters, putting solar on bus shelters. The distributor is kind of, we want it. I mean, I want it. I would love to see every house in the state of Mississippi with solar panels on it, but it's just not affordable. I looked at my house, you know, eight thousand dollars for the minimum that TBA requires in order to get the incentives. Currently, the state of Mississippi doesn't offer any incentives. You know, that's a thing that the distributor can look at, but we'll offer you some incentives to install solar power. Uh, TBA currently pays a thousand dollars upfront cost on that, on the installation charge, uh, and they pay you twelve cents above whatever you're paying. So, I mean, I, I don't know about Starkville, but in Oxford, Water Valley, we pay about ten cents a kilowatt hour. They pay you twenty-two cents for everything you produce. But the distributor, and I've mentioned this, looking at us offering an incentive, you know, we'll match that thousand dollar TBA. Uh, of course, you get into a lot of state laws about donations or gifts or any of that thing. Municipals have it harder than co-ops. Co-ops could very easily say, yeah, we're going to give you a thousand dollars to put it in. Of course, we have to abide by all the state mandated laws and rules. Helping on the, we have in-home energy audits. Oxford, a good friend of mine at Alcorn Central Electric, they do them for free. They'll come in and evaluate your home and tell you, make these suggestions to you. Uh, Oxford, and I think Starkville, I, I know Starkville does, uh, goes through a company called CSG Conservation Services Group. They come in, they charge you a hundred and fifty dollars. And then they pay you so much, up to five hundred dollars plus a hundred and fifty if you do the work. It wouldn't be hard to have a distributor come in and, yeah, we'll do the energy audit for free. Just like this morning, I talked to the couple. I told them what they could do over the phone. I can't go to their house and crawl around their attic. But it, you know, it'd be very easy for the, the city, the board, the, my boss, say, go out there and do an energy audit. I could do it. That, that would be a great one.
Good. Thank you.
Further question?
Okay. Jump in line?
Jump in line.
Is the energy audit just, in reference to that, when someone comes to your home, do they actually use any instruments or tools or is it just a visual survey?
Yes, they do. They, uh, they have laser. They point at the wall and they can show you all the, where there's no insulation in the wall, the same way in the attic, now the ceiling, they point the laser detector at the ceiling and it'll show you where there's, and they do get up and crawl around in your ceiling.
Further question?
Um, obviously, two key components of this job are going to be personnel management. It's a large department and, um, financial and budgetary management.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us a little bit more about your style and your experience in those areas?
When I was at Water Valley as the foreman, uh, we had, we did have a couple people quit for one reason or another, so, uh, you know, I did have to sit through the hiring process just as, just as you are. Interview, make recommendations to, superintendent was there with me. You know, we made recommendations to each other who we thought would be the one and then, of course, we had to go to the board and make those recommendations. Budgets, sad to say, I don't have that much experience with it, but I do, if you'll see one of my good friends, uh, is a controller for the Tallahassee Valley Authority, used to be the auditor for the, uh, for TBA, Tennessee Valley Authority, uh, good friend of mine. If I can't get the answer, if I don't know it, I can find it.
Further question?
I have a, have an interest in underground utilities. Underground utilities, so could you, in your opinion, give me the pros and cons of underground and, and when it would be feasible to take an overhead line and put it underground?
Policy at the city of Oxford is all new construction is underground, period. No questions asked. It doesn't matter if it's, you've got to run a thousand feet or fifty feet. As a lineman, I don't like it. If I'm outside at night working and I can see overhead and I see something laying on the ground, I know that's bad. If it's underground, it, it takes, it's a considerable, I wouldn't say considerable, it's a lot longer to find, to isolate the problem underground because you can't see it. As an engineer, I put every bit of it underground. It's a lot less maintenance. Uh, I'm sure all of you have had your lights go out and I can promise you, I've read studies after study after study, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time it is an animal of some sort. And ninety-nine percent of that time, it's a squirrel.
Humans included?
Well, snakes, um, iguanas, I've seen everything under the sun getting a power line, flying squirrels, bats. So on that aspect, I put every bit of it underground. They can't get into that transformer. They can get in that overhead line.
Further question?
But there is a considerably bit more expense of putting it in underground, especially when you start directional board.
Further question? Any further questions? I think none. Mr. Stevens, do you have any concluding comments you'd like to make?
Uh, I want to, I want to thank you for allowing me to interview. I would love to move, my family and I would love to move back down here to Starkville. Like I, as I said earlier, I'm, I'm pretty sick of that red and blue up there. I wear my Mississippi State belt every day with pride, my diploma, my degree's hanging on the wall where everybody can see where my loyalties are. Again, I want to, I want to thank you for your, your time and your consideration.
Do black bears come around?
I haven't, I haven't seen the bear. I don't want to see that bear.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. That concludes our interview for the evening. Unless, uh, anyone here has anything else they'd like to discuss now about it, my suggestion is, uh, that we adjourn this evening, recess this evening, come back on Tuesday night and have a discussion.
Hey, if I could make one comment for you. What, what you have seen tonight is what I have felt to be our viable candidates, uh, through the advertisements and everything that we've done. We've got probably another thirty applicants that are everywhere from California and the state of Washington to Maine and Florida, uh, that are different levels of qualifications. Uh, I, I really feel that these six candidates are our most viable candidates out of the pool of applicants we've had so far.
To that end, uh, one, one thing that we can do is, uh, we can have all of the written applications, uh, at, at the office. If anybody would like to go through those on Tuesday, and should you feel someone should have been interviewed that was not interviewed, that's pertinent something that we can discuss on Tuesday night.
And Starkville Hattaway is, is, uh, when we hire someone, that, that will be a period where he'll see agree to stay on board and he'll, he'll.
He, he'd stay on board. He would do that so we get somebody else that's one.
I know, but I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't there be some?
Please agree to transition if that's what you're asking.
Right.
Like, you know, whether it's a couple of weeks or however long, just to.
Okay. There's no further discussion. Motion to recess will be on. Motion has been made to recess until November sixteenth, two thousand and five thirty, one on one length of street in City Hall. This is from, get the motion. So here's that. Motion has been seconded and followed by Mr. Mayor Alden.
He's going to adjourn that recess with special files. He's going to adjourn this meeting.
Okay. Okay. Alden Sisdruck, would you like to rescind and restate?
I'd like to rescind and you may restate.
Alden Sisdruck has made a motion to adjourn the meeting until November sixteenth, two thousand and five. two thousand and five thirty, one oh one Lanham Street, City Hall corporate, on this round, get your motion.
Is it Mr. Perkins?
Excuse me. Go ahead, here it's second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded and followed, but then, Mr. Allman, this is Druck, do you speak on this?
No, thank you.
Discussion, discussion, discussion taken, all is effectively seen by the same guy. All supposed to be seen by the same guy. Nice, nice, really fast. Stand in the house, nice and good. Y'all did good, thank you.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.